Okay. Let's call our meeting to order. Minutes and reports received and filed?
Yes, we have the Cole County Clark's January 2015 piece, and then the Cole County Reporter needs January 2015.
Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports. Announcements of other upcoming meetings and events.
The community's meeting on Thursday morning. Did you get the invite?
Six forty-five at the jail. Yep.
Thursday morning?
Yeah, tomorrow morning, or Thursday morning. Tomorrow morning's Lions' Ham and Bean.
Tomorrow's Wednesday.
Yeah, tomorrow's Lions' Ham and Bean Day.
Yeah, I didn't get an invite on that.
On the communities?
Yeah. I don't believe. Maybe I did. Cole County Communities?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I probably did.
I'll get old Sean.
Yeah, Greg's gonna feed us. Friday's United Way Annual Luncheon.
We got a Parks meeting today. And that Cole County Extension Dinner, is that Thursday evening?
Mm-hmm. How are you going?
I'm probably gonna have to pass. I think I have some other things. I was hoping to make it by for a minute, but anyway, I'll call Bill. Bill Case called and asked me. Um, are we doing KWS on Friday? No, that's not, I'm sorry, wrong week.
Is it the first Friday or second Friday?
Second Friday. I was on the wrong week. I was on the thirteenth.
We can't do it next week either, because we're a CCAM.
Right.
Oh, that's right.
Might let them know.
Yeah, Lauren's gone still, but I'll...
Yeah, we could reschedule.
Just need to remind, too, that Highway 50 is gonna be closed, I think, from Friday at 7:00 PM until the following Monday at 5:00 AM from Madison to Clark Avenue, because they're taking down the two bridges, so. Be interesting. Presentations from staff. Purple Wave Incorporated presentation.
Ready for me?
Yes.
Yep.
Got the light show ready?
Well, I brought you some hard copies.
There you go. That's fine.
It was gonna be compatible, and I thought, well, it'd just be better if I gave you a hard copy and just walked through it. Later I can give it to you. Instead of trying to take up your PowerPoint. There's one. Thank you. We also want to have a copy. Well, thank you, everybody, for giving us some time today. I know you've got a lot on your jacket, and I don't wanna take a ton of your time, but I just wanna review with you real quick kind of what we are and who we are. Purple Wave is an internet auction site. We handle thousands of pieces, have dozens of auctions every month. We deal with local city government construction. We do ag, we do industrial. First page just kind of talks about what we do. We make everything very simple for you. We're a whole-service auction. We document everything. We handle titles. We take all the pictures. We handle all the financial. We qualify our buyers. We collect the money, we pay you. We're basically tourniquet. You guys sign a contract with us. We take care of everything for you. And why do people use us? Well, they use us, one, we're gonna get you a greater return on your investment. We make it very simple. There's no transportation. We sell everything as-is, where-is. And we come with verified asset. We, like I said, we take pictures, we take videos. We verify the condition, and we post it, we market it, and we sell it for you. The reason that we are able to get such a great return is because we have a national exposure. We have hundreds of thousands of buyers nationwide. We're one of the fastest-growing companies independently in the United States, and we're also endorsed by the Missouri Bankers Association. Some of our customers, I listed a few, local and national ones that we have, Missouri Department of Transportation, Oaks, MFA, Boone County, Callaway County, Cooper County, some of your local contractors are Jefferson, Absfall, Versoys, Septagon, Napa, and Meyer. I don't know if anybody has heard of these companies, but if you need a reference, we have pretty good exposure here locally. Some of the things that we sell, I mean, we have hundreds of different categories of items that we sell. I listed some of them, but there's always new things coming. Dozers, motor graders, dump truck, police cars, sheriff's cars, mowers, tractors, you name it. A little bit of everything. Why do people use us? I listed on the back kind of some of the most common things that governments use, which basically we found to be gov deals, seal bids, private trading, tradings, the dealer. I'm not sure which one you guys use the most, or what one you prefer, but the reason those companies and those government entities are using us, one, it's very simple. We're straightforward, we're transparent. We post everything we've ever done and ever will do. So if you wanna know what we did last year on dump trucks, we tell you. We don't hide anything. We post everything. Gov deals, we take the pictures. We market it for you. We know everybody who's ever been on a loader grader or dump truck. We've got people making outbound calls, myself included, to help market your piece to get a greater return. I'm sure everybody would like to squeeze more into their budget for their taxpayers. We're gonna help you do that. Can't hear me. Seal bids, again, we have a lot of government entities that use this. Again, we've got over 130,000 registered bidders now. We take the weather out of play. We take transportation out of the equation. They can set it at the comfort of their home, make bids. On average, start to finish, the process lasts about 40 days. That's gonna be from the time you call me and we list it till you got a check in hand. We have a government auction every month. If you have something that doesn't fit into the government auction that we feel will get a greater return, we'll put it in that. So there's no waiting. You don't have to wait till your annual meeting, or once a year, end-of-year closeout. We've got something every month for you. I think last year we had 167 auctions, so. Trade-ins to dealers. I used to be a dealer. Dealers love you when you come and trade in your piece. I mean, I'm not saying that they're not treating you fair, but when you can sell it to an end-user, it's gonna benefit the county. I know I went through that kind of quick. That's why I wanted to leave you with some information, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, I put some references on there. If you want a name or a phone number, I'd be happy to give it to you. Even the greater thing, you guys are a state entity. You piggyback off the MODOC contract. It's at no charge to you. If we sell one of your vehicles for $5,000, we write you a check for $5,000. So there's no charges.
What, do we have the ability to purchase off of this?
Absolutely. I was gonna mention that, but yeah. Through some of the flyers, you'll see, we do sell some stuff for some bigger cities. Fire trucks, dump trucks, maybe million-dollar pieces. We just sold one for North Kansas City here a couple weeks ago. It was a million-dollar fire truck. Well, after a few years, they're gonna update. Smaller communities such as yourself can invest and get some pretty good deals.
So does that meet the requirement of the bidding requirements that we have to?
I don't know what you're required to. I mean, it's a public auction. Anybody can bid on it. Any government. We have, you know, most of our buyers are sellers and vice versa. So if you guys are looking for something, like, we've got a real nice road grader on there now that a bigger municipality out in Kansas is selling. It's a low-wired machine. It's a late-model machine. You know, you're gonna save the county some money. And the great thing about it, we post who it is, where it is, and everything about it. You can call the individual. You can ask questions. You can go touch it, feel it, drive it, see it, and you can pretty well make an informed decision before you make that trip by what we document. So we're not hiding anything.
Okay.
But yes, takes two minutes to get registered. Individuals, we usually require a credit card for a county. Just an authorization letter from your bank or the county would suffice.
Okay. That's all I got.
Is the equipment more than computer chairs?
Yes. We do annual sales for, like, Wichita, other different communities that want a annual house cleaning. If we're doing that for you and it's a large group, we will take on those assets. We try to do it as a, what we call a featured sale sometimes, if it's big enough, where we can dispose of everything for you. It's just, we need, if you're having a complete disposal, the big assets will make the draw, and we can throw the little assets on the same sale, which will help market it. So yes, we can.
Well, most of this looks like Larry Ben's type.
Some of it.
Yes.
There's some amulets, there's various other stuff, too.
Sure. And like I said, we post all our results. You don't have to be a registered buyer to get online and view those. You can see upcoming auctions, previous auctions. If you're looking for a specific asset and can't find it, please give me a call. Be happy to help you. Or if you're looking for something, if the county's looking to purchase something, you don't see that new is the way to go in your budget, give us a call. We see stuff coming every day.
Does Larry have all your contact information?
I've been down there. I've talked to him. I've actually, I believe Jennifer told me you guys were getting ready to dispose of some stuff. I don't know if you've got a list. I also look and help my buyers, and I've got buyers who look for stuff like what you're selling, and then they sell with me.
Okay. All right, great.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks. You got information? You got it?
Yep.
Want more? No, we have our district records. Can I give you?
Okay. Presentation by Central Missouri Community Action.
First, I have our annual report, as well as, as I highlight what we do in our eight-county service area.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, my name is Sarah Nichols, and I am community organizer for Central Missouri Community Action. So within Cole County, my job is really to help make connections between those that are in poverty, as well as non-for-profit organizations and city entities, government, et cetera, and help build stronger communities. It's kind of what, basically what my role is. So our mission is to empower individuals and families to achieve self-reliance. So we are not in the business of necessarily giving handouts, but we are very much in the business of empowering people to do for themselves, to get out of poverty, and to give them those opportunities. So through that, I'm just going to report a little bit about what we did for Cole County in 2014. One of the programs that we administer is Head Start. And through Head Start, what we do is we offer a low cost of free childcare for those that fit specific income brackets and priority ratings. And in that program, it is not a free program to our participants. They are expected to volunteer their time back. They are expected to basically pay back the federal dollars that are being spent for their child by volunteering, by working in our classrooms, by helping support that program. And this program teaches parents to be involved, active participants in their child's education, because we find that if we start early, they continue that as their children get older into school. And it's just a great way for the kids to start and have active, involved adults. So last year, we helped 142 families in Cole County. That's how many families we served. Some of those families, we helped get GEDs. We helped get employment. We helped them get insurance, helped them learn English. So depending, each family sets their own goal. You have to have a goal to be in the program, and we believe every family should have a goal, and we help them achieve those. We also administer the MWA program, which, for those of you that don't know, that's the Missouri Work Assistance Program. For those that are receiving TANF, which is a temporary assistance fund, they are referred to our office, and we then give them work, sanctioned work. We do, first, they come in and we teach them job skills, because a lot of these individuals just have never learned how to dress appropriately, how to behave in front of, you know, large groups of people, how to show to work up on time, how to do a resume. So we do all of that with them, and then we place them into volunteer work sites where they're not getting paid, they're just getting that experience. If they work out with that volunteer work site, then we subsidize their employment and actually pay for them to work for you or small businesses in Jeff City. And then after they've been subsidized, our expectation is then you will put them on as an employee. And so this is a great program to get people back to work off government assistance and provide that training. And they couldn't give me strong numbers on that, but essentially, they see over 250 clients in the Cole County office every single month. So that's a pretty staggering number. And granted, not all of those are placed through work assistance and whatnot, but out of that, we do have some successes. Energy assistance, we also administer that. And we do two different types. We do one where they can get kind of like an ongoing energy assistance and a payment once a month, and then we also do the emergency energy assistance. And that's the big one that we see a lot of clients come through. And last year, $983,937 were spent in energy assistance in our eight counties, and out of that, $212,000 were spent right here in Cole County, helping people keep their power on and all of that. We also weatherize homes, and this can be for low-income participants as well as just general public for a fee for service. And we will come in, we have people that will assess your home, and then actually provide you assistance and actually come in and do the weatherization for you. We also administer Section 8 in Cole County. There's a couple different Section 8 programs, but we administer one of them. And last year, we spent over $93,000 helping individuals obtain housing in Jeff City. And then the final thing that we kind of offer as a blanket thing in all of our counties is health insurance navigation. So we are helping people navigate that marketplace and figure out, you know, how to get coverage and all of that good stuff. Beyond that, we also have ongoing community efforts. And right now, some of the big projects going on in Jeff City that we are very much in support of and a part of are the transportation efforts, just, you know, helping build on that transit. We really believe that it not only helps those that are low-income, but a big thing that I believe in is, you know, the fewer people we have in poverty, the better our city looks, the more marketable we are, the more people want to stay here, and the more young professionals want to come here, which builds, you know, just builds and builds. And so it's really a vested interest for all of us. The other thing is, is that we have the Homelessness Task Force that is really building and really working hard right now. It's broken into smaller sub communities, and they're working on setting up transitional housing programs throughout the city so that these individuals that are living unsheltered, that are homeless, you know, to expect them to just get a job off the street is kind of difficult when a lot of these people, you know, may not have clean clothes, don't have an address, et cetera. So part of the Homelessness Task Force is, what they're trying to do is get these people in places to stay, get them counseling, get them, you know, off the street, and contributing members to our economy and to our society. And then also helping small businesses and coalitions succeed. One business I'm personally working with right now is Halo, which is, it's, right now, she's basically serving those that are teen pregnant moms that are homeless in Jefferson City, and we're trying to help them grow and help them build, gain support, because we think it's an awesome program. So just a couple other things that we provide in the community. We do micro-business classes and loans for those individuals interested in running their own business. I think last year, we gave out, I think, six different micro-business loans. Usually, it's a $500 loan that we start up with. They can apply for more, but this is just starting, and that doesn't have to be low-income participants. We do homeownership classes and homeownership counseling, trying to help people get into that. We also do Step Up to Leadership, where we take low-income individuals, and we teach them how to be leaders within the community, teach them how to sit on a non-for-profit board, and really empower them in that way. We do Photo Voice, which is for kids that are in middle school to lower high school. And the Photo Voice projects teaches kids how to take photos, use digital cameras. We give them a digital camera, and every week, it's on a different topic, and they actually go into their community, take pictures of things that they would like to see changed, things they would like to see built upon, and then we present those to different government entities to let them know that the kids, you do have a voice. People do care, and it's really empowering to those kids. We also do poverty simulations. If any of you guys have attended those, it's just kind of a picture, a day in the life of someone in poverty, and shows you how difficult it can be to actually navigate the system. Those of us that don't live there, sometimes, you know, we're like, well, just get a job, you know? And we don't realize, oh, well, you have to have a ride to get a job. Oh, well, you have to have money to get bus pass. So those poverty simulations are really good for kind of opening our eyes. And then finally, the thing we're really excited about is that we have purchased Cafe Via Roma this year. It is Jeff City's first big social enterprise, and CMCA's first social enterprise, where all of the proceeds to that will come, we're using it both as a training site for MWA, so our participants are able to go and work and learn those skills, but also the proceeds of that are going to be back into our funding, so we're not so dependent on federal dollars, and we can be a little more self-sufficient, which is always our goal for both our participants and ourselves. So basically, I already said, we fight poverty, so what does that mean to the rest of us? Like I said, when we all do better, we all do better. It's just a matter of wanting our city to be, you know, the best it can be, and I think a big part of that is, you know, how we treat those that are, you know, less fortunate than ourselves. And ways that all of you all can help is attend a poverty simulation, donate money or volunteer time. I'm big into that volunteer time. The checks are nice, but I love the hands. Understand that poverty affects our community, affects all of us, and, you know, just being a good steward of those. And also, I'm also here to be of service to you all. I'm a servant of the city, and so, in any way that I can help make connections and that I can help grow our city, I'm definitely happy to do that. So do you guys have any questions for me? I ran through all that kind of question, sorry.
So how are you funded?
How are we funded? We are funded through multiple different federal grants. I am funded through the CSBG grant. It is kind of like the Community Development Grant. We are just, it's kind of a, you know, you've got your social services side here. We're kind of the other organization that comes in and picks up, and versus just giving that money out, try to do the training, try to really make that impact and get in there and stop the cycle of poverty. And also through donations.
Okay.
Have you been to the simulation?
No.
Just need to let him know next time you have one. You wanted, didn't you?
I didn't make it, so, yeah, I'd like to make it the next time, so.
Yeah, we have multiple different ones every year. We actually are really excited this year. We have our first youth poverty simulation, and we're doing that at St. Joseph's School. And it's really gonna be a neat experience where the kids get to see what it's like to have a reactive life, where things just happen, maybe they don't go through school, and then they get to see what it's like to have a proactive life. And the goal of that is to keep them in school, keep them working and things like that, so.
So you had touched on one thing that I wasn't even aware of, but you said that you taught people how to prepare for work.
We do.
And so, I mean, I was just blown away that there's so many people out there that don't. I mean, I would think that, I guess, people never get taught that, and maybe that's something that we should teach in our schools.
Exactly.
So, and then the other thing that you had touched on, you said, you see 250 people per month?
Yes.
That, and I assume these people are down on their luck, or they just don't have a job, and that's just here locally, or is that, is that in all eight counties?
That's the Cole County office, we see. And people come in, and we immediately do assessments. So do they need short-term assistance? Do they need the work assistance? What do they need? And that's really what we do. And then we try to help them, you know, we try to stay very connected in the community so that way we know all the resources that are out there, and we can send them here, send them there, you know, and do what we can. But yeah, over 250 a month. And I gotta tell you, some of these people come in, and they're a mess. I mean, they just are. And to tell them, go out and get a job, they would have no clue. Their mom didn't have a job, their grandma may not have had a job, and these people are coming in saying, I want a job. But it takes a lot of work to get them there.
Right. And then you had also touched on Cafe Via Roma, and I wasn't sure, are you having a fundraiser there, or you purchased the building, or?
We actually own the business now.
Okay.
Yeah, we own the business. It's just starting, so if you guys do go and visit there, if you have feedback, please give it to us, both positive and negative. We want it to be, you know, we're right there by the Capitol. We want it to be a premier location and really be something that we can tout in Jeff City, like, this is an awesome business right by the Capitol that helps our people.
So some of these people that want jobs, are you putting them to work there so that they're getting experience?
Exactly. We have five spots there. We, right now, had two individuals. One of them didn't work out yesterday. We were really disappointed. But we had two individuals, so we're gonna cycle somebody else in, and the hope is to actually have it be a pretty large training facility. Unfortunately, I think we're only budgeted for six full-time employees, but the hope is to just continually rotate people and then also use some of these other, like, voc rehab and things like that, once we have our stuff together, and help them by letting them come in and also do some training at our site.
And break even or make a profit, or?
The hope is to make a profit.
Okay.
I don't know if we're, we're gonna close, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The hope is to make a profit, and that way, because, you know, as you guys know, government money, federal dollars, it all comes with so many stipulations on what we can and can't do. And, you know, our city's unique, and so the ability to spend that money where our city needs it would be phenomenal.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thanks, Sarah.
Do we have some?
Y'all get rid of all that cake?
Do what?
Y'all get rid of all the cake?
I think we did eventually get rid of all that.
Guess y'all didn't make it out there for their anniversary dinner.
No.
Oh.
No wonder you have so much cake left. Is it free food? You'll get about there.
I'd finish business.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you.
New business. Accounts payable.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable.
I got one hundred dollars.
Yes. So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
I'm staying.
Chris?
Yes.
Approval of Elkins wires for sole feasible source.
Hi, we are seeking sole source approval for the programming and printing of the election ballots. Any expenditure over $5,000 requires advertising in the paper. We did that on the 18th. Ten days need to pass between that time and any contract is let, so we're outside of that window. I just need you guys to enter into writing that you approve it and then get it in the minutes, and then Marla's here to answer any questions on the ballots themselves and why it is sole source. So were there any questions, or?
It's just on the paper ballots themselves.
Yeah, and it's just for this year, so.
Yep.
Nope.
I mean, we approved the contract for sole source for, with Elkins wire.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion of economic development and public welfare with the 2015 budget. I think we had talked about that.
Yes, I'm just looking for some direction as far as, I did send you a list of what we've contributed to those different sources we talked about last week, back to '97, I think.
You haven't attached to this?
No, I'm sorry. Didn't email.
Oh, white paper.
It's out there. I sent it to you. I sent it to you.
Don't get y'all trained yet. So when did you email that? If I can find it, too.
Uh, 1/28.
1/28. 1/28.
Okay, I thought it was on the desk.
I just need some direction on whether I'm to mail the letters, mail the contracts as is.
So I think we just need to decide, and from my standpoint, I don't really care what we do, and which ones, I mean, if we want to continue to fund all of them, but I know Jeff, you said something about a $5,000 threshold, and, I mean, in general, I'm good if we want to knock everybody back to $5,000, but I would like to see us, would like to see us come up with some number, and maybe not for economic development, because sometimes we'll approve certain things that we want to fund that are ED activities, but it's just, as far as this general public welfare number, I mean, let's, I'd like to see us decide that we have $50,000, or $60,000, or whatever that number is, and that this is a number, and that's all we're doing, and so we can divvy it out however we want, but we're not gonna exceed that. I mean, and that's, I mean, we can always change our mind later if we want, but, you know, I think that's just.
Well, we could send out a letter saying that because of all the additional requests, 'cause I know there's a couple more out there that we're gonna be getting sometime here in the future, that we're gonna set a ceiling for $5,000, but they're always.
I don't want to say that, because there's some of them that don't get the $5,000.
Well, but on those, you would just send them saying, we have $2,000 budgeted for you, or $3,500 for A, but.
I don't think that we need to even send the letter, I mean, I just see that, we just say, okay, you want to submit a request, we've taken your request, and then we issue a contract for whatever that amount is, but, I mean, if it's, if you have that $5,000 threshold that you don't want to go above, I'm good with that, but let's just look at a total, let's look at a total picture of how much, how much we're gonna do, and that doesn't mean that we have to do anymore, but let's just set a number that we don't exceed that.
Like we did for Ecodivo?
Yes.
Put 200 in there, we can put 50 in this. What number are you looking at? What do we have in there for this year? We just have that number for this year.
Did you want to separate the?
No, we're separated.
Welfare from the economic development?
Yeah, yeah, I thought you already did that.
Yeah.
We are not in her spreadsheet.
And economic development, there's 49,000. Now, you did approve the Historical Society, which that's.
Right.
That would have to come off of that 49,000.
Is that like a sort of budget time discussion?
I thought Historical Society was a $7,000, or it was in Public Welfare.
It was last year, but we put it in Economic this year.
Okay.
So what's the total for 143?
143 right now?
What?
That's what I said we do for 2016, but just put an amount in there when it comes to that point, then we can see how many requests we have. But Debbie and Kristen usually try to get ahead of the game on that and know how many we have, so we're actually approving the amount and who it's going to at that time.
There's 41,000 in welfare, and then there's 49,000 in general accounts, economic development, besides the Chamber.
Currently what they've requested?
Yes, basically.
143 is how much?
141,000.
41, and that took out the ones we put into Ecodivo?
Yes. Less the ones we took out, yes.
Okay. Sometimes not very organized right here. Yeah, fun, my chicken scratches.
Actually, on that spreadsheet, on the budget for 2015, the one that has dollar amounts in it are the ones that are in the welfare, and then the rest of it went down into economic development.
Under the budget line?
Yes, under, yes, under economic development budget, right, this second column of numbers. But the letters plus requests are in the first column.
Foster care's in Ecodivo, or we didn't?
Yes. I mean.
Really?
It should actually be in health and welfare.
No, that's the one that we didn't give a different number to.
We hadn't assigned an account number yet, because we weren't sure how you could handle it in the future.
So basically, that's just one of, so if we did, we had five for them, so if we had 46, so that 143.
Debbie, how many in that 41 is over $5,000 current?
Two, three?
Three.
Homemaker, Senior Nutrition, Habitat. Those have historically been those numbers, so, that's why I didn't have as much problem with those being that number, and we can go back and change it, but.
Now, you did just approve the Historical for sevens.
Yeah, we did it last week.
And Historically, it's been seven also.
Well, I think Senior Nutrition probably goes back to Bill Deacon when he was clerk.
Yeah, back in 2008, we were just paying the 5,000. When was the last time it was that low?
We put Crime Stoppers and Economic Development, too. Right?
Yes.
And the Historical Society went to Economic Development?
Yes. Some of these are fine line, but we were trying to do it based on the people they served, you know, we'd be in the welfare part, except for the foster care. And then there's three of them there that we did not have a dollar amount, four of them actually.
I thought we had talked about not doing Art in the Park, but anyway, I know there's 5,000 in there as a request.
You waiting for a letter back?
I have not sent, let's see, who did I send letters to? I did not send that one. Yes, I did send that one a letter.
You sent them all letters, I thought, if they were waiting for their contracts.
No, I did not send them all a letter. I just sent.
Did we get a request for Thursday Night Live?
I don't know if we got anything in the budget or not.
I thought there was an email.
Well, we put that in Ecodivo part.
I'd still kind of like to wait on that, 'cause I think, I think when we gave them that money, that was for them to do some Fall Thursday Night Lives, and I don't believe they're gonna be doing them this year, so if that's what we were trying to help them fund, I don't, I don't think they really need the money.
All I could see is the hot rod tour thing, which was just a copy of an email that Christian received at budget time way back in September.
Let's make a decision, so that Debbie has some direction of where we're going.
Who do you need a decision on?
Well, I need to know whether I'm to mail the letters out, or to send them a contract with the dollar amount in there, what do you want me to do? Do you want to have them come in individually and talk to you? I just.
Are we not gonna give them the money if they send us a contract back, or what's the deal? I thought we already did this in Budget, is where I'm confused or frustrated.
We have to approve the contract for each one of them.
Yes.
And so.
But after they sign it?
Before we make an offer.
But, right, to me, like Jill said, this is an offer to them, we've got the dollar amount in there, we're telling them basically, sign this, and.
No, you're just sending that to them, so if you have a uniform agreement, or tell them to send their own contract in, and then we'll decide if we want to approve it.
It's got a dollar amount in here, is the reason I was worried about sending it to them with a dollar.
Yeah, and I think they'll. How do they send the contract in for a dollar amount that they don't know what we're gonna approve?
Right.
So we want them to send three contracts in with different dollar amounts, and we pick, or?
What's the letter say? Does it tell them to send a contract in? I know I read it and signed it in.
It has the dollar amount in it.
The reason you're filling out the contract to send it to them is so that y'all have one that has what we want in it. So now what we're doing is saying, you sign this and return it to us, and then we'll approve it. We're not making an offer. It's not like you're buying a house. We don't, we're not signing anything, so you have to have both signatures on there even for it to be an offer, so. I disagree that they're gonna be able to come back and sue us because we made an offer, and then we changed our mind on it. Either that, or we make a decision now. We're not gonna give them 5,000, we send that with the offer of 5,000, then don't send it.
Well, I think if we send them this letter saying we've got $10,000, they're gonna, they're gonna expect $10,000, so.
That's what I'm saying, if we're not gonna give them the $10,000 and pull it out, don't even put $10,000 in there.
Right.
I thought we approved that in the Budget, so that's why we're sending a letter. So if we're not going to, then let's withdraw it.
We set all this money aside, just like Economic Development, we set aside $200,000, but we get to approve any in all of these. I mean, it was a request, and so now we just need to make a decision on whether we're gonna go forward with these dollar amounts, and who we're giving it to.
What's the top one?
Eye and.
What's your top letter?
Dental, eye, shoe program.
I'm fine with it.
Oh, I'm sorry, never mind.
They don't have any money.
Never mind.
Homemaker Services, $7,500.
$7,500. So, yeah, certainly.
We've been giving them 75, I'm fine with it.
Well, we started giving them 75 in 2012, before that, we were doing 5,000.
I know, but after that's whenever I made my own little personal policy about the 5,000, there's nothing saying how much we can or can't, so if you're not okay, or you want to drop it to 5,000, then go for it. I'm saying I'm fine with 75, I'm just wanting to move on them. We went through this during Budget.
Okay.
Let's go through them and vote on each one.
Okay.
Okay?
Homemaker Services, I have one at 7,500.
Good.
Good.
Do you want to reduce it, or do you want to?
I'm good.
I mean, if we're just gonna stick with all these amounts, I'm good with it, but if we're gonna pick and choose who we're gonna take down to 5,000, then I'd take them all down to 5,000 also, so.
Okay, so is that a motion to see if there's a second to reduce them all to 5,000?
Well, I was just, I was just asking a question.
I didn't vote to bring Salute up to 10,000 in 14, so I'm not gonna vote to bring it 10,000 this year, 'cause I prefer to keep them all at 5, but I'm not gonna reduce the other ones to 5 at this point, so. Did Salute request 10,000 again?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's in the Budget?
It's technically under Economic Development, it's not setting out there with their name on it.
Right.
The ones in Column 2 are the ones that are setting out there with their name on it, in the public budget. The other ones are not.
We want to do Column 2 today, then, and we can do the Ecodivo ones later, 'cause we're gonna talk about Chamber, too. Are you wanting to address that one today?
I know Greg Bexton wants us to make a decision.
Well, they want to give a quarterly report, too.
I like that idea.
So, you want to get them scheduled, then?
You obviously haven't sat through one of them yet.
Well, we can, oh.
Yeah, let's not stay away from that.
So you want to leave Column 2 the same way, as is?
Yeah, I'd be fine.
7,500 for Homemaker Services, 3,500 for ABLE, Senior Nutrition at 10,000, Habitat for Humanity 10,000, Art in the Park 5,000, Soil Conservation 5,000.
I will say, the last two that you mentioned, I did send them letters, and needing a court order from the soil and water and the Art in the Park, we did ask her for what she's going to do. So even if you approve those today, at least, just keep in mind, they're gonna come back with and give me answers on those two.
You've got a letter for Crime Stoppers, too?
I have not sent that one out.
Okay.
The only ones I've sent out is Art in the Park, Soil and Water, and Extension. Just because we need to know what Art in the Park is going to do with that money.
Well, hers are different each year, she's got a different project that she's sponsoring with it, so.
So, that was a great.
Yeah, I'm okay with them.
Okay.
You want to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion, we give the 7,500 to Homemaker, 3,500 to ABLE, 10 to Senior Nutrition, 10 to Habitat, 5 to Art in the Park, 5 to Soil Conservation, if we approve of what Art in the Park's project is.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Now, if we need a roll call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, um, do we want to address the Crime Stoppers, or are you guys okay with the, with the 2,000 there?
Who are we addressing?
What do we?
I just need to know, they're in the economic.
I thought we did this all in Budget, so.
You just, no.
Well, I know Greg White went last, at the last meeting, you know, he, he.
Talking about Crime Stoppers?
Yes.
Crime Stoppers.
I move we approve 2,000 for Crime Stoppers.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Foster care for 5,000?
Why didn't we just include that with these?
I move we approve foster care for 5,000.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Salute to America.
I can't agree with everything.
I know, me either.
No, you're on the committee.
Me either.
You're on the committee for Salute.
Yeah, I mean, I move that we approve Salute to America for $10,000.
Sam, go ahead and say it.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Because we know Jeff wants to say something.
Okay.
No, I already said my piece about when we went through Budget, so, I don't know, if y'all still want to do 10, you know, that's a pleasure.
I still think that that's out of, that brings in more people to Jefferson City, which I think is, it's.
I like it, but I'm not.
I like that better than Thursday Night Lives, I think, but.
I'm not gonna have any heartache.
Okay, well, you're gonna get to vote on it here, and it's just a second.
First, second, let's finish.
Talk for an hour about this?
No.
What were we talking about?
We got a first and we got a second for the 10,000.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Come on.
I was waiting for Sam to ask me.
Okay.
Okay.
And the very last one, which I just overheard a little bit, maybe we're gonna have the Chamber in here for the quarterly meeting?
Yes.
We need, yeah, we need.
I'll schedule that with them.
Yeah, we got more talking to do about that one.
Okay.
I mean, it's a little different.
Okay.
Cut it off.
All righty, I will take it from there.
Did we really spend that much time on that?
Yeah.
Before you change subjects, so next year in the Budget?
Yes, let's talk about it in November.
Do you want me to send letters?
No.
To those people, or let them on their own approach us?
Yes, I think we should let them approach us, but that's, I'm one of three.
I agree.
And would you like to come up with some kind of, like, application form if they do approach us, that tells us, like, number of people they serve, and a brief description of what they do, and, you know, some kind of standard format that everyone has to submit the same information to us?
Are we gonna be able to have one that will fit each application?
Well, we'll make it generic enough.
Well, I think it's more of a generic, I think there'll be one for Economic Development, one for Public Welfare.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
But I think most of these, we know.
And anything you do that is not currently there, we will stick to a $5,000 limit, is Is that kind of what you're thinking in the future?
We don't have any policy that says it has to be. That's just my own personal policies.
Well, I just didn't know if you wanted to set a maximum amount, so...
I think they can request for whatever they want, but I guess where I'm coming from is whether the amount's five thousand or whatever it is. I'm just... I mean, I got this much money, and I ain't giving out any more than that. And so, until we get a threshold, I mean, we're gonna have everybody in our brother requesting, so...
Then we will.
I mean, I'm good with giving people money, but at the end of the day, there's only so much money, and we can't just keep doling it out, especially when it's not our money.
Okay, we'll work on that, and we'll let them see it before we do go.
We've only added a couple of them in the last several years, though, surprisingly, 'cause I thought the same thing, too.
Yeah, but there's a couple out there that are gonna be asking, 'cause they're doing some major fundraising, so... But we can take those.
As they come.
As they come.
I think Jeff and I are both good at saying no. The verdict's still out on you yet.
I said yes.
You know, I get hit up at the store for more. It's when they come in, they wanna speak to the manager. I figure they don't know me, then I don't do it, but...
Not here, huh?
Yeah.
So, your wife wasn't there? The boss? Manager or the boss?
Maria's the boss.
Okay, Christie.
Okay. Approval of signing, Cole County Health Department MOU, Disaster Volunteers.
This is just a renewal of our MOU that we have with Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to participate in the Show Me Response Network for Sam's benefit. Basically, any volunteers, nurses, doctors, whatever, can sign up through this Show Me Response Network, and they do all the credentialing. And then if we ever had a disaster, and you know, we only have eight nurses, say we needed twenty-five, we could go to this network, and they would find twenty-five volunteers that have already been credentially through their service that would be willing to come and help us out. So, it's a free MOU with them, and it basically just gets us into their network. And if we have volunteers, we can have them sign up if they wanna, you know, help out other counties, too. But it's basically a credentialed database of volunteers that we could use if we need it.
Is this with the state?
Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services.
Okay. So, I move we approve and sign the MOU with the Department of Health and Senior Services for Disaster Volunteers.
I gotta wait till we have approval. All in favor?
Aye.
And it's good till May of two thousand and eighteen?
Good.
Printed name.
I can fill it out.
Have to come to type it, though, we'll bear a while. We need to start having these meetings on Monday.
No.
You're making us wait till Tuesday.
I'll tell you what.
My Monday, Jeff. What's wrong with Monday? Come in, you're fresh from the weekend, you're ready to go.
Okay. Medical Supplies Discussion.
This bid was last bid out in two thousand and twelve for usage beginning in two thousand and thirteen. And we continued using Boundary Medical through two thousand and fourteen without any increases. This year, we do have about thirty-five hundred dollars based on two thousand and fourteen usage of increases. Those are all manufacturer-driven increases. The bid documents say that we can extend the contract for this last year so long as it's under five percent. It is, I believe it's like three point eight percent. So, I'm looking for a direction on you guys, from you guys, if you are good continuing with Boundary, or if you want to rebid that out for two thousand and fifteen.
Is there any, you know, state contract on any of these medical supplies?
Yes, there is a U.S. Communities one that I'm working on getting prices, and there's also a state one that I'm working on getting prices. My goal is to be able to provide whoever does the ordering with three options to kind of scan the line items. There are lots of line items, so it takes some time to get that specific pricing, but that's in the works also in addition to this county bid option from Boundary.
So, it would be the cheaper of any of the three, I guess?
That's my vision, yeah.
Is Boundary typically at state contract, or sometimes probably below, or...
Yeah, the more options, obviously, the better.
They're very competitive, based on previous bids.
But the percentage that they're at now for two thousand and fifteen, I mean, that's far less than anything we've seen out here. If you have more choices, you get better.
So, what do you need from us, Jen?
Just, I just need, I guess, approval to go forward. We didn't have a contract signed then, that many items, but just, I guess, a motion or what? I don't really know what we need.
I think we need a... I mean, we're actually extending the contract for a year, aren't we?
Correct.
If we didn't have an initial signed contract with that, do we need...
You should've had one.
Not with the... On the ones that we've always done numerous line items, we've never...
Purchase for service type.
Lowest and best.
Yeah, it's Boundary. I can get an extension, I can get that, no problem. Is that what we wanna do? As long as I know that that's the direction we're wanting to go?
Yeah, I'm good with moving forward.
I don't have a contract, what are we extending?
Well, we're gonna... I'll bring back the contract. We're extending the pricing for two thousand and fifteen with the exception of their increases, which I sent you in an email, and I do have here if you want them.
All we're doing is asking to continue the same practice we are now, purchase for service.
I understand. I thought y'all said we didn't have a contract, so that's why I was trying to figure out what we were actually extending, so...
I think that's the question at hand, is can we continue?
I'm good with going forward, but I think we need a contract for this third...
I'll get an extension ready, and then I'll just bring that up, then, as long as the discussion's...
Okay, bringing it back at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, we just gonna wait till next month, next meeting?
We have to approve and sign the contract.
Okay.
We had a contract.
The document itself is a contract that they legally sign and submit their pricing, so, yes. And I will get a contract extension ready to be signed.
Yes, no?
I don't think I've seen...
Be good with Jill, please, and just make sure that it is...
I don't know why I have a confused look on my face, but when there is one, it's contracts.
Get with Jill, please, on what we got, and make sure that we have a contract in place.
These are fun.
Okay.
Welcome to Monday on a Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Still say, when you have Mondays, we need to start the week off with this.
Okay. So, we got our first reading of Budget Adjustment Number One.
Yes, this is for four thousand dollars. It's a grant from the Juvenile Department. It's for... For a family court suspension grant. It's... So, I don't need any action today?
Not yet, no, we're through.
Sets for ten days, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. First reading of Budget Adjustment Number Two.
It's for fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Again, it's for grants for the Health Department. It's Missouri Tobacco Use Prevention Grant.
Okay.
Again, no action today.
Those for additional funds, and so will we have to expense those out then, too, or...
Yeah, the court orders, leave it on both sides.
Okay, other issues, I guess Greg, he was in... I talked to him yesterday. He's got wonderful news on Pringer Center.
I'd like to put out a request for bid and design to upgrade the Pringer Center. They're on their heating and cooling and automation control. I would like to get your permission to go ahead and do something like that, put Jennifer in it going.
Yeah, 'cause you just got a jury rigged right now, right? So, if that thing goes, shoots the craps altogether, then we're gonna have to move those kids.
Yeah, so I'd like to get moving on that before it does happen.
Yeah.
I'm good with putting it out for bid. Design build, is that...
Design build, yes.
Can we put that in your capital this year? Where we're gonna get the money for it, what's...
No, we have not.
I mean, yeah, we need to get a bid, look at it, see what it's gonna cost, first of all.
Coming out of capital improvements, which we haven't said it. We got that on another agenda to look at those, don't we?
'Cause that is the original system, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
It was donated equipment in ninety-three.
Yeah.
Well, that was gonna be my next question. When do we have the capital improvement stuff on the agenda to talk about again? So, it is on there, though?
I will put that on there if it's not, the next one.
'Cause we need to go through some things. We got the windows and the courthouse. We got several things we need to talk about.
Yeah, I think we're still waiting there for a couple of things on the windows.
Right. I'll give Jen a call today and see where they're at, then.
We can still go through the list and see which one's a priority, though, because you don't have to go get pricing if we're not gonna do it.
Well, I think this, though, we need to do something immediately, 'cause if that... With this cold weather, if that thing goes out again...
Cold weather during the summer.
We've got... When I was over there a week and a half ago, I think we had five people in the cells there, too. I mean, if something... That thing goes out and we have to move... We have to move those to some other facility, it could be kind of expensive, but...
I'll get with Jennifer, and we'll get something wrote up and get it going.
Okay.
So, I had one other thing I wanted to talk about. Still under new business, so... Did you guys get that email from the clerk in regards to the batteries on those DREs? So, it's gonna be three thousand dollars for new batteries for these DREs, and... So, it's like we're getting nickel and dimed on service contracts, and now these batteries. And anyway, we're not even gonna use these DREs this year. So, anyway, I just wanted to talk about it. I mean, I think we're gonna have to make a decision on what we're gonna do. I mean, the reason that we approved the maintenance agreement was that... 'Cause once we let it expire, then we don't have that in place. But now we're talking about another, oh, I guess it's just three thousand dollars, but anyway, so we're gonna... So, we're gonna have to ship all these off and get all new batteries in them, and then if we're gonna replace them...
Well, basically, we just gotta... We gotta get through what we've got. We've gotta get through the elections this year and then next year.
We're not using these this year.
Those are the handicapped ones.
Oh, okay.
We're not using these at all. We wouldn't use them until March of next year, but the batteries are shot, and they need to be replaced this year. So, I mean, we gotta make a decision on... On what we're gonna do. I mean, if we're gonna move forward on the voting machines for next year, we gotta decide, because we're just... We could just potentially just throw this money out the window.
Well, you guys did make a decision to go ahead and bid this, so we're working on that.
Right.
So...
We don't have to do the batteries right now, though. We can do batteries. We can decide that in six months when we get these bids back and say, "Well, we're gonna buy new machines. We don't need batteries." And don't do it. I know this says January thirty-first, we're already two weeks in it back anyway, so... They the only ones that do the batteries?
Yes.
So, potentially, would there be any... Any reason we would be using these?
Not in two thousand and fifteen. I haven't had time to call Elkins. I don't know when their drop dead date is, that we have to have those machines down there for them to replace the batteries. But I guess we're just wondering if we need to continue to put money into them or not.
I think I would wanna know how long it's gonna take them to put the batteries in there. If we can do this in October, you know, why do we gotta decide now? It's thirty-one hundred and twenty dollars we don't have to spend on them if we're not gonna use them.
Right.
So...
I can find out for sure. I know they probably need to know now, 'cause they'll have to order the batteries. It's like, how many people are gonna replace the batteries so they can do one order of thirty batteries versus one order of five hundred batteries? But I haven't had time to call them.
Check and see, just, yeah.
Okay.
Get that back on the next agenda, if that has to be signed.
Are we gonna be dealing with this company with the new ones? 'Cause I already don't like them.
They're... Well, yeah.
Kind of sense that over there, too.
Well, yeah, it's like hurry up and...
Y'all are thinking about buying new ones? Hey, hold on, you need to put new handles on the carrying case or something now before you do this. Send us another four thousand dollars.
Don't you do add-ons when you're doing a job?
At the customer's request.
Okay, you don't suggest...
We have the bill from having to replace the batteries from four years ago. So, I mean, it's something that has to be done every four years.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not something that they're...
We need to buy some time here, so we can decide if we're gonna do ones.
Well, if we're not gonna use these this year, and if we buy new ones for next year, it's just kind of... It's kind of a waste of money.
Right, and that's what Steve was wondering. It's like, okay, here's another bill for these machines. We're not gonna use this year, but it has to be replaced before sixteen if we're gonna be using these machines in sixteen.
Will you find out about that, and then just let us know?
Okay.
Back on the agenda.
Okay.
'Cause I love talking about voting machines.
Yeah, me, too.
Okay, Mark then, too.
Marla, we'll probably get you your own seats.
I was gonna say, can I see you?
I got, I got.
Yeah. Get y'all a couple of seats, put your names on them, reserve.
Oh, that'd be nice.
Do we have any other issues? We don't even go into closed session this time. Anything else?
Talk about your inability to type.
Do you have anything else?
No, I wanna get you into a typing class, though.
When I was in school, that was... Women did that in home ec, you know, it just...